I am.
And Mr. Baldwin, are you with us?
Yes, ma'am.
Then I think we have everyone here. We will then call to order the Town of Lake Lor Town Council regular meeting Tuesday, March the ninth, two thousand and twenty-one at five P. M. Having reviewed the agenda as written, are there any changes or edits or missions?
Madam Mayor, I have a change. Could you scroll down so to see the consent agenda?
Michelle, could you scroll down for us?
Thank you.
Uh huh.
I'm a little confused because the consent agenda for Budget Amendment three hundred has been on and off the agenda. Is it in fact on or off today? That's the dam concept design.
Should be on.
Okay. It's not here, but if it were here, what I'd like to do is take it off the consent agenda, but it's not there and put it under new business. I'd like to discuss that a little bit before we go forward. So we'll keep it on the agenda, but it would be item C, which is Budget Amendment number three hundred, dam conceptual design.
Madam Mayor, if I may, Michelle, you have the paperwork for that sent over from finance, right?
Yes. So we will add dam design, dam conceptual design. Budget Amendment three hundred will be added as item three under new business.
Yes, ma'am.
Are there any other changes to the agenda? Then do I hear a motion to accept the agenda as amended?
Go ahead, Kielby.
I second it.
All in favor?
Bryant, I.
Dureo, I.
Kielby, uh.
Or I.
Then the agenda stands as amended. I will now move on to the mayor's communications, and it is my pleasure and my privilege actually to be able to introduce resolution honoring Mr. Max Lainer, who was a former commissioner and a former mayor in our town. He has recently is deceased. Do I hear a motion to approve this resolution honoring Mr. Max Lainer?
Madam Mayor, Mr. Kielby, I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Dureo seconds.
All in favor?
Bryant, I.
Dureo, I.
Kielby, I.
Or I.
Then the resolution passes unanimously. I'd like to take this opportunity to read the resolution to you. Unfortunately, we're not able to have any of his family with us here tonight as we normally do, but I would like to say that the family of Mr. Max Lainer has donated to the town a lovely painting of the Town of Lake Lor, which will be hung in the mayor's office here, and we appreciate that so much on their part. And if I may take the time to read the resolution. Whereas on August the ninth nineteen twenty-eight, Max Eugene Lainer was born in Marion, Ohio. And whereas Max E. Lainer faithfully served as a commissioner for the Town of Lake Lor from November twenty-six nineteen ninety-one until November twenty-third nineteen ninety-three. And whereas Max E. Lainer faithfully served as mayor of the Town of Lake Lor and was sworn into office on November twenty-third nineteen ninety-three and served until November twenty-fifth nineteen ninety-seven. During his tenure as mayor, the town hall was erected in Lake Lor. And whereas Max E. Lainer was a valuable member of the town and served on numerous boards, including the Environmental Development Council and the Tourism Development Authority, and served as chairman of the Isothermal Planning and Development Commission. And whereas the Town of Lake Lor is deeply saddened by the loss of previous Lake Lor Commissioner and Mayor Max E. Lainer, who passed away on Monday, January the eleventh twenty twenty-one, he will be missed but not forgotten. Now therefore be it resolved that the Lake Lor Town Council desires to honor the service and memory of Max E. Lainer for his contributions to the Town of Lake Lor and hereby express their sympathy upon his passing and extend condolences to his wife and family, adopted by unanimous vote of the Town Council on the ninth day of March two thousand and twenty-one. And I know we all share in our sympathy and condolences to the family and our appreciation of all the contributions that Mr. Mayner made to the Town of Lake Lor during his tenure as both a commissioner and as a mayor. Thank you all so much. We will move on then to the town manager's communications. Mr. Baldwin?
Yes, ma'am. I will run through these quickly. There are some department heads on staff that maybe will answer some questions. Just real quick on the dam update, as council is aware, and those town council basically approved a ten-year notional with milestones and made a decision to begin work towards a new dam. That has been submitted to DEQ Dam Safety, and we've also submitted to them all the additional documents, studies that have been performed by Schnabel per their request. I've asked them to, and they have acknowledged receipt of those documents by email. I've also asked them to respond back to us with a little more information regarding our decision. It will be short, no doubt, but I'm going to then revise the hot paper that we created to send to DOT to let DOT know that we've made a decision. We're working closely with dam safety and want them to integrate that into their decision-making relative to the the new bridge. There was, since we've added the item Budget Amendment three hundred to new business, we'll we'll follow up with a little more detail on on the dams. I'll wait for that. Sewer, quickly, we're still working through the SOC. We're almost there. That's the special order by consent. That's the agreement that we enter into with DEQ that basically allows us then to operate the wastewater treatment plant in such fashion that we do not receive fines and penalties for not meeting standards. We have a very unique system. DEQ recognizes that. They're being very flexible with us, as was reported by LaBella today, and once we set the new standards, we're dealing with a one-off treatment plant. DEQ knows that and is working with us. So once we have that document approved, then the fines and penalties will cease, and we can move forward with that. The last item for sewer is the E R E I D. We're in the last phase of having that reviewed by DEQ, and so we're looking to April. Hopefully to have both the SOC and the E R E I D approved by the respective divisions of DEQ. Dredging update, Dean is working on revising the permit. He's working closely with LaBella to make sure that we have everything in place to to basically attack the sediment at present and also as the drawdown occurs twenty-one, twenty-two. Dean, is there anything you'd like to add to that?
No, I believe that about sums it up.
I'd say the last thing we are pursuing relative to dredging is Dean is working on a spoils site, a fill site off Island Creek Road that we can then repurpose for possibly usable land in the future. And so he is, he's working on the permitting with LaBella on that. Water, we continue to learn new information about our water system over in Firefly Cove. We have some additional information that we've we've learned. We need to explore some of that before we finalize where we would like to go with the Firefly Cove system. So this is new information that came to David Airwood's attention recently. And so David's, or anything you'd like to add about water relative to that item?
No, I think you covered it, Shannon.
Okay. Last is hydro. Dean Lindsay is working to have the large generator cleaned. A company was called in. They were in the cleaning process and had a little bit of a issue with the bearings on the large generator. Bottom line is this company that was called in basically is agreeing to fix everything that they had issues with relative to the large generator. So we're, hopefully we're looking at taking that back online next week. So that's, that's the sum and summary of my town manager communications, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. Any questions from anyone for the town manager?
Madam Mayor, I have one comment on hydro that I think would be to the benefit of all of our Lake Lor residents online. So this maintenance that's going on with the generators, typically we would contract that out to to folks that have been working with us for years, would take months to do, take it apart and assess. Our folks in-house now, under Dean's leadership, is doing ninety-five percent of that maintenance. And what they can't do, they're getting someone down there to correct it right away. This is a completely different way of doing maintenance on those generators to get them up quickly. I thought I just mentioned that. That's a good news story, and it's due in large part to the team that we've assembled down there under the town manager and the and his department head's leadership. So I put that out there. We're in a different way of doing business, and that generator coming online in a matter of weeks would have taken months, if not years, under the the way we were doing business before.
Thank you for bringing that up, Commissioner Dureo, and I think we all appreciate just the measurable improvements and efficiencies and effectiveness since Dean Lindsay has taken over position of Director of the Hydroelectric Plant. So we appreciate you bringing that up. There's no other comments then on the town manager's communications. We will move to the public hearing. G S one six six A dash nineteen point twenty-four. And I will turn that over to Mr. Baldwin.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I will turn that over to Mr. Mitchell Anderson.
Good evening, everyone. Let's see. Brian and Jenny Lael have applied for a rezoning of their parcel. Tax pin two two seven six two nine. Located at five oh six Memorial Highway. The rezoning request is to change the R one residential section of a split-zoned parcel to commercial general, the commercial general district. Michelle, could you skip down to page two of the staff report? Which is attachment B? One more page, actually. So as you can see in this top image, the current zoning map shows that that top section of this parcel is zoned commercial general and the bottom section of this parcel parcel is zoned commercial. Sorry. The top part is zoned commercial general and the bottom part is zoned R one residential. Below that map is the future land use map from the comprehensive plan, and you can see that the Lael's parcel, the future land use plan is for full residential. In that commercial, the local commercial that area in red is actually pushed further up and projected to cause another split zone parcel. Of course, this is just the future land use map, which is just a guiding document. It's it's no proposal. It is not a proposal for rezoning. It's just a guiding document. This matter came in front of the zoning and planning board, who provided the a recommendation based on this future land use map. And that is seen in attachment C below. There it is. And I can read this recommendation. This was from the zoning and planning board decision from March sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. The Lake Lor Planning and Zoning Board has provided the following statement of reasonableness and comprehensive planning consistency. The rezoning of the R one residential zoning portion of the Lael's property is inconsistent with the two thousand and seven, two thousand and twenty-seven comprehensive plan. As the future land use map indicates, the Lael's parcel can be zoned for future residential use only. The rezoning of the R one residential portion of this parcel will not align with the current neighborhood character in this area, which is primarily used for residential single-family dwellings. Further, the parcel's current dimensions will not section ninety-two zero four zero building site minimum dimensional requirements of the zoning regulations. It will not easily accommodate required off-street parking for commercial uses. Accordingly, the Lake Lor Zoning and Planning Board recommends to Lake Lor Town Council that the request for a map amendment to rezone the above parcel be denied based on the above statement of reasonableness and comprehensive planning consistency. That was the determination by the zoning and planning board. However, town council does not have to take that recommendation, or they can take that recommendation, but the ordinance written is is always written in the affirmative. So that would be the one right after or right before attachment A, Michelle. The main considerations that staff have for this rezoning is one that it is currently a split-zoned parcel. Split-zone parcels are in general tricky zoning-wise. Essentially, you get a split use of that parcel. Since this parcel is relatively small, staff's only recommendation is for it to eventually be a single-zone parcel.
Thank you, Mitchell. Are there any questions from either commissioners? And as I stated before, we cannot actually vote on this tonight because of the statute that requires us to have at least twenty-four hours for public comment after this public hearing. So we will continue the discussion as long as it is, it is remain, there are things to talk about, and we will then have a vote on Thursday at one o'clock. So that, to that point, are there any questions for Mitchell concerning this?
Yeah, I have one. Mitchell, I had a couple of the neighbors that called and with concerns about this. They were opposed to the zoning, and they ask when in the process is the property posted and the neighbors notified about proposed rezoning?
I don't have those dates on top of my head right now, but the property was posted and joiners were sent first-class mail notifying them of of the public hearing.
Okay, all right.
Mitchell, in that regard, what? What are the guidelines for the neighbors that are notified? Immediate adjacent, do you?
For the notification process, all adjoining parcels. In general practice, we do a hundred feet from the property line, including parcels across the street.
I know we had had an email from from a neighbor that lives in that little cove, but facing that property, I think, and he was not happy. He had not gotten one of that. I guess the answer to him is that the guidelines don't require where his property is. It's close, but it's around the little cove there where that is. Did you see that email?
Who was the, if you don't mind me asking, who was it from? So I could cross-reference my?
Oh, I can't remember.
Yeah, I can't. Mitchell, you might might want to check up. My memory is foggy on this, but it seems like at one point and several years ago that we were looking at a similar situation, and it seems like there was a determination made to also notify people directly across a cove. And I'm not, I may be completely wrong about that, but I just, I do remember there was some discussion over who was notified on rezoning and I don't know, Shannon may remember. Shannon, you remember what the, do you remember that instance?
Not specifically. I think the thing that we've used most is the buffer. The distance from the parcel. That way we can use GIS to notify exactly those that fall within a hundred feet of the parcel.
And I may be thinking about something else, but it just, it seems like that came up one time.
Mitchell, I found, I found the email on that. That was Tony and Leslie Montanari at one thirty-four Basswood Drive. Was their property address on Lake Lor.
And included in the packet, there is a list of individuals who receive first-class mail.
He's not on it, Mitchell. I checked. He must, he must have been just out of the hundred feet. He is across the 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 little inlet, but he's not probably not within the hundred feet.
And whatever it is. The one sixty B doesn't take in the state statutes, or sorry, one sixty B from the state statute doesn't take into consideration lakes, but we always use the one hundred-foot buffer. And I read through the amendment before sending notices, and I don't remember anything in there requiring for anything across the cove, but I will double-check that really quick.
Mitchell, I'm probably thinking about something else. It just, it seems like there was something about it, but maybe not.
Mitchell, would you define the, all the different ways that notice was given?
Yes. So we published in the newspaper for two publishings, and Michelle has the confirmation that they were indeed published with the paper. We provided a physical posting on the parcel itself, and we also sent first-class mail to the joiners listed in that mailing confirmation. And then I also, to a step further, and individuals who sent me any information or concerns about it, I also emailed them information regarding the meeting, so the link to it.
Mitchell, can you affirm that you complied with the law relative to notice?
Yes, to the to the best of my law, my knowledge and my time reviewing the requirements, I would affirm that I met the law or the requirements.
Thank you. It might be just nice gesture, just a suggestion, that since he sent this email, it looks like it was sent yesterday. We all should have gotten a copy of it, that we just reply to him, the process or something. So he understands that there is a process we go through, and hopefully we meet, you know, we touch everyone that that falls within the guidelines. He was not excluded for any reason, I guess, maybe. Shannon, you think that's wise, or?
We certainly can do that.
Yeah. Did you get a copy of that, Shannon?
I don't believe I did. If I did, I may have missed it.
It looks like it came to the mayor to add to the commissioners, and it did not, it looks like not included were any of staff on that. So I'll forward that to you, and I'll forward it to Mitchell. How about that?
That'll be fine. Thank you.
Okay, I'll get that to both of you guys. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mitchell?
I have a general question, Mayor. Are we, for the protocol for this, are we going to go into public discussion and then council discussion, or are we saving our discussion for Thursday?
Well, we cannot take any action on this today because of the statute. So we will, you know, if we can complete our discussion of it certainly here.
Okay.
But but we will delay any decision until Thursday at one, so the public has an opportunity to make any comments over the next twenty-four hours. And it was said that the reason we did Thursday instead of Wednesday, which would have been twenty-four hours, it would be so late in the day tomorrow to do it. So that's why we postponed it till Thursday. But certainly we have ample opportunity to discuss this. If anyone has any other questions, does anyone have anything they'd like to ask Mitchell or a comment?
I have some comments, but I think I'll wait till after the public discussion, if there's anything out there before we start.
All right.
May I interject, Madam Mayor?
Of course, of course.
I reviewed the section for the amendments as required in ninety-two, one seven four B for the notice requirements. And it says whenever there is a zoning classification action involving a parcel or land, the owner of the parcel or land as shown on the county tax listing, and the owners of all parcels of land abutting the parcel of the land as shown on the county tax listing shall be mailed a notice by the zoning administrator of the proposed classification by first-class mail and the last address listed for such owners on the county tax abstracts. And so it seems just the parcels that are abutting it. So the notice was actually sent out even past that that requirement.
Okay, thank you. That clarifies that for us then. We might still want to respond to him, but we're certainly not under any constraint to have to actually include it in the in the notification. So if there is no other discussion and there is no public discussion, the public is certainly advised that they can submit comments over the next twenty-four hours to us. Should they have any comments about this? And then we will simply take this up again on Thursday at one P. M.
Mayor, this is William. You might want to ask if anyone is on now.
Thank you. That's a good idea. Is there anyone, and Michelle, you may know of someone if they've contacted you previously. Is there someone who would like to make a statement? Now, this is a public hearing. If so, simply same thing as public comment, simply unmute your mic and let us know. I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. Is there, please feel free to state your name and your address if you would like to speak.
Madam Mayor, obviously, this is Jenny Lael, but we're not sure exactly when we should speak.
Well, you are welcome to speak now, absolutely.
Okay, well, good evening. Thanks to everyone.
Thank you for joining us.
Yeah, it's good to see you all. Well, first of all, just want to say thank you to all the council for allowing us to be here and also to Mitchell and Dean for both their advising and helping organize this. But just wanted to state a few things, and what I'll do here, if you don't mind, I'm going to switch over to my hopefully I can find it. Yeah, there it goes. First of all, just a little history. We purchased this property in May two thousand and twenty because of its split zoning. It's R one residential and CG commercial for the operation of our livery boat rental company. Our business plan is a little different from other existing livery boat rental companies on the lake. Our pontoons go out long-term, and they go out to vacation rental homes all across the lake. And indeed, we, we think our neighbors don't see a nuisance factor with what we're doing. Our boats are delivered, like I said, to lakefront properties. They stay out at those homes pretty much every day from mid-March through the end of November. And I almost can guarantee that neighbors have witnessed, or probably not even aware that livery boat rentals were actually taking place from five oh six Memorial Highway because our boats are always out. But our business plan is one of the most non-intrusive and what we hope is aesthetically pleasing. What we want to do from here on out is to be non-intrusive and aesthetically pleasing as our, to best of our abilities. To do this, though, we felt it was necessary to apply for rezoning at five oh six and simply like to be clear about something. We're not seeking to go from R one residential to CG commercial. We already have that. to CG commercial. We already have that. We are simply trying to extend the CG zone that we have, which I think y'all know is pretty small, although it will allow for our boat rentals to continue as we do our business in the manner that we do it. But paying the money and trying to get rezoned and trying to go through this process with you guys is hopefully going to create a better buffer for our neighbors, especially the bakers. Uh and on that line of the property. And for some of you who may not know, that's that's not the end to where the property ends in the waterfall situation. It's out where the bakers and then you jump over and there's Lake Lure Adventure and then out to the Dam Arena. So um what we hope to do is create a bigger buffer there. And also, uh we we got some advice from some people about building boat houses and docks and stationary ones and also floating ones. And what we're trying to do is to put that in the best possible spot on our property. So issue number one, I just want to say again that we want to provide a buffer to our neighbors. Uh the CG zone of our property begins at that Baker property line. And then we'll have a 15 foot required setback. And then that still gives us roughly 25 or more feet on the water property based on our survey to more commercial livery boats. So extending that zone will actually help us come further away from that property line, which was our main intent. Issue number two, in the next few months, we plan to make 506 Memorial our permanent residence. We currently live at 115 Averly Drive. And in moving over there and that becoming our primary residence, obviously, um our business plan of keeping the boats out at all times and not the, you know, the in and out of boats all day long is something that that we covet and hope to do and plan to do. And also um coming from advice from contractors that we've had out on site, the best possible topographically, financially and aesthetically best place to build in the area is pretty much on the property where our existing dock is located. And what I've done is I've tried to send some photos of that into Michelle, possibly she could bring that up for you guys to look at. Uh that shows our proposal of how we plan to build the dock and have the commercial boats extend from that so that they're legally in their commercially zoned area. But to address that, obviously, moving away from the Baker property line is going to help everyone. Uh and to address issue number two, the several contractors that came out on doing those things, advice on permanent structures versus floating structures and also the best spot to build. And what they're telling us is that it's too rocky for a floating dock structure to stem parallel from the shoreline and that commercial zone that exists there. Pretty much rock damage would occur annually with the lowering of the lake levels and it was not advised for us to do that. The ideal spot for construction of a permanent boathouse is recommended to stem from the existing dock on our property toward the Baker property line. And, you know, most boat houses we've looked into that would service our knees would be 48 feet wide with a two-stall boathouse. And then you would have your commercially zoned boats or I'm sorry, commercially permitted boats would be extending from that zone, uh which would create a better buffer away from the bakers. But to build in the current area that exists, like I said, is going to be pretty tight over there. Uh and then I just want to take one more second of your time on responding to the zoning planning board. Uh the packet that we got, it should be about, I guess, page 26. Michelle had already brought that up for you guys. But we understand that it's merely protocol to not recommend rezoning for us due to that 2007 2027 comprehensive plan of the future lake use map. If that's the long term of it. Uh and that was a document drafted about two decades ago. And like Mitchell said, that's just a planning document. It's not a document that's for rezoning of any kind. But we understand that we're grandfathered in as well. We've talked to Mitchell and others in planning and attorneys, if you will, that that say we we have rights as far as zoning goes. We are grandfathered in. We spent almost half a million dollars to purchase this property. Just short of a year ago. And we're told that we can never lose that existing CG zone that exists there. So what we're trying to do is create a better situation for everyone. We hope that people really understand that. But also the second sentence in that zoning and planning board response, it says zoning would not align with the current neighborhood character used for and it's used for residential, single-family dwellings. And that is simply, in my opinion, false. Uh a few inches from our property there exists, which is the Baker Line property. There exist no residence. There's just a dock. Uh a few feet from that is the Lake Lure Adventure Company. A mere 50 feet from there. Uh a few inches from there, you have Alan Moore's Dam Arena and Jay Freeman's Construction Company operations daily. Uh and this is a far cry from from residential zoning, if you get my drift there. Uh and sentence three says that we're not in compliance with parking regulations. We've looked into that as well on the advice of Mitchell and others that we are assured there is this is easily achievable. And and if not on the existing 506 property, if you don't know, there's there's a spot for 10 cars up there. I mean, it's pretty ample. But also, we we could do what's called a remote off-site parking request that Mitchell tells us about. This would be similar, maybe if some of you know the current structure that Lake Lure Adventure uses, they have an off-site parking arrangement or agreement with the point of view restaurant where people park there because they have overflow parking needs. And then those people walk down busy Memorial Highway down to the Lake Lure Adventure Company to get on a boat or they park at 506 Memorial daily. And then they walk up to Lake Lure Adventure Company. We battle that pretty much every day of the year over there. But anyway, just pointing out the fact that parking is okay. I just wanted to respond to what the zoning and planning board had looked into that. And what's going, like I said, what's going on now at 506 Memorial can and will continue. Rezoning for us is a win-win, we believe. This would provide a less invasive environment for our neighbors down on the water and would also allow us to build a boathouse or dock in the best possible spot, both aesthetically and financially. It just makes more sense for us there. So to not rezon us would tell us that you want to limit while others just a few feet away, 50 feet away are allowed to remain unlimited in commercial activities and their operations. And it also tells us that you would want to limit what we can provide to patrons and, you know, people that use our services. And it would show a lack of interest too in helping us build a boathouse in a less hazardous area. Because there's a lot of rocks over there in that commercial area and where our existing dock is, there's obviously not would just be a better spot. Uh but to stay within the guidelines of the commercial zoning, our boats need to extend into that area. So we're either going to build a really wide dock out there and have those boats over closer to the Baker Line. But just we feel like it's a better deal for everyone. So we're trying to do what's right. We know what our zoning rights are and we're going to continue to help Lake Lure provide a unique and necessary service out there on the water. Thank you all.
Thank you so much, Ms. Lael. Are there any questions before we ask for anyone else who has a comment from the public? Any questions anyone has for Mrs. Lael?
Um I I have a question um relative to what Ms. Lael uh was telling us, but I want to ask it of Mitchell. Mitchell, it seems like in our zoning meeting that um we were instructed that the um that that the state regulations require that we not look at a rezoning particular to any one use, that it has to be the breadth of whatever would be allowed there under that uh under that zoning classification. Is that right?
Uh that is correct. And I've included the commercial general section of the town's regulations within, I believe, attachment B. So if Michelle, if you want to skip up to just below a little bit further down. Should be right there. There you go. So scroll down just a little bit further, Michelle. And the rezoning is just a general rezoning. You can't specify. You know, they can only do this one thing in the zoning district. If you rezone the rest of the parcel to commercial general, they would have access to all permitted and conditional uses within that zoning district. So if you scroll down just a little bit more, Michelle, you'll see right there is permitted uses in that entire list. And then below that is conditional uses.
Okay, of course. So we don't have the option of saying, yeah, we would rezon it for the purposes before us today, but for nothing else. It has to be all or nothing, correct?
That is correct, to my understanding. Mr. Morgan can can chime in if he was wishes.
Yes, I agree. You stated it correctly, Mitchell. To do otherwise would probably constitute a contract zoning. So it's not unusual for zoning or rezonings, straight rezonings, I'll call it, uh to be um for boards to know what the, you know, is planned. But you must consider all of the range of uses that could take place, but once it's resolved and so we're showing that for the record now, uh Mitchell included those documents and we're talking about it now. So I've always advised that you need to have the record be able to, you know, be able to reflect in the record that you are considering those other uses. This is what apparently it will be now. You know, for foreseeable future, I suppose, but it could always change. And I just wanted to state one final thought on the notion that the zoning can't change, the the town can always change the zoning anytime. Uh the grandfathering that was mentioned of the applicant is correct, but it's the use that's grandfathered, not the right to have the zoning always be the be the same. Uh but the use itself, if it were to be rezoned uh to a category that that didn't allow this, then they could still do it. It'd be a non-conforming use at that point. So long as it's not discontinued for a certain amount of time. They would be able to do that, so.
We have any other questions of Ms. Lael or Mr. Morgan?
Madam Mayor, if I could, so the little bit of context to to what we're going to be looking at for for Thursday. So we we uh since the business, since that property was as a portion of it, there was CG. Town Council took a look at that business proposal and we authorized one and then the second commercial vessel a little bit later on to operate from the property. So the the issue really is linked to zoning, but it's really a mooring issue for the commercial vessels, right? Because the zoning doesn't go into the water. We own we own the lake. It's a matter of how to execute the business model from the property, if I understand Jenny correctly. And it's mooring of the commercial vessels, right? In order, if you're going to build a boathouse, you want to be able to moor the commercial vessels at the boathouse. You wanted more of a buffer for CG in order to allow that to happen. I don't want to misstate. Is that is that correct, Jenny?
Yes, David, is.
So I I would offer just to take a look at and and to get an answer before Thursday. So if it's a mooring of the commercial vessel issue, the lake use regulations allow for livery operations to be conducted from CG property, which you're doing up to four boats if you can fit them. But it also states in there the mooring restrictions for the livery boats. And I'll read right right from the the lake use. It says, "Commercial business operations must be conducted from lake structures adjacent to lot zone CG, GU, R3 or R4." You're doing that because you have the CG. Uh "Commercial boats may be moored in any zoning district under these conditions." "The boat is moored at a property being used as a residence for the business owner and employee." Well, that's right next to you, right? And you said you're going to move in there permanently. And B, "Primary business operations are not being conducted at the residence," which are not. You're doing that on the CG side of the property. So so I would take a look at that. If we need a legal opinion, we can do that. But it seems to me that the lake use regulations allow you to moor those boats anywhere on that property, whether it's CG or R1.
Wow.
I'm just I'm just reading our own regulations.
So, thank you, Commissioner Dior for bringing that up. Mr. Morgan, do you have anything you want to add at this time on that?
Based on what he read, it appears he's correct. But um you know, just on the fly, I don't want to say for you know, for certain, but I mean, that's a reasonable interpretation. Obviously, it's about the only one uh based on what Mr. Dior just read.
So so I just offer that because we may not have to rezon. That's that's the the, you know, I read and I took very seriously the comments from the neighbors. And they don't want to have a whole lot of boat traffic and parking issues over there. But that business model isn't about that. That business model is about taking those boats on a one-time deal and putting them somewhere else on the lake. So there are no customers that are coming to that business location. So I think if we articulate that, take a look at the mooring uh rules. And if you can moor those boats there and conduct business there because you do have the CG portion, I think that's a win-win for everybody. I would just offer that up.
I agree, David. And I it it seems to me that the way these the vacation rentals work, somebody's going to rent that boat one week. It may go to another house the next week. It may not even come back to that dock. It may not see that dock hopefully all summer long, you know, from one vacation rental to another.
I agree. I I think having the CG and the R1 is a perfect fit for the Lael's business model. Uh my view, but but we can explore it. And William, if you could, I guess we'll get it pointed in your direction. If we could clarify that, then it becomes a non-issue for us on Thursday, I think.
Well, you still, you still need to, I'm sorry, you still need to uh take action since it's a pending application unless
Yes, sir.
it's withdrawn and which I'm not suggesting it should be. I'm just saying that maybe the applicant will consider doing that since they can already do what this is intended to accomplish for them. But I will read it and uh can you give me the section number?
Yes, it's it's on page 17 of the amended lake use regulations. Uh under it's, um let's see here. Commercial classifications under item Lake Commercial License Schedule of Criterion. And it is under mooring restrictions on that chart. Printed clear as day.
Dean, are you with us?
I am.
So it sounds like it's something that you and William ought to have a discussion about. This is your your purview. This is your area of responsibility. So an issue has been raised and sounds like there's a need to review the interpretation of that particular provision. And uh we're we would ask that you discuss that with William.
I have
Sounds good.
I have a question too. How how would their desire to build a boathouse work into this whole scenario? That might be something we need to explore as well.
Yeah, John, I mean, it's a great question. I I think you you build the boathouse to the regulations for building a boathouse, no matter where it is on the property. And and then the issue becomes where can you put the boat?
Yeah, I think I think in this situation, it would require, I I can't say for sure. But I think it'd have to be variants involved and stuff like that to be able to build a boathouse on that property. There there at one time was a boathouse. They're very small, single boat that my recollection was it was not located on the small portion that's CG. It was on the on the R1 part, but that's something that would have to be considered
Yeah.
addressed.
So as far as your boathouse goes, that's going to be a Mitchell issue for Mitchell and Mike to review and talk about with the the Laels about what dimensions of uh to be had relative to a boathouse.
Right.
Sorry, Shannon, this is Jenny Lael again. Um I I thought we just cleared up the situation. What Dave Redd said that we can pretty much build a boathouse in our residential zone and park those boats anywhere we'd like. So there would be no need for a variance or anything like that.
So what I what I
By the attorney as well.
Right. So what I said did not contradict any of any of what was said previously.
Okay.
I was simply making a statement that any dimensions any dimensions of the boathouse is going to be, that's Mitchell's area of responsibility. So he would need to review sort of boathouse.
He would have to have plans, you know, proposed in front of him and make sure it meets setbacks and
For making, making the point, not that I afford or against it, but I know there's regulations that fall into place here. You know, whether, no matter where the property is, if it meets the regulations for a boathouse. And that, that was my reason for throwing that out there. I don't think anything that Dave said or read it gave full, open, you know, to, to build a boathouse. I don't think. You could moor them there. You could tie them to, to, you know, to a dock or something, but I, I, I just want to make sure that's addressed and answered in this for the Laels benefit as well.
I may be able to provide some clarification if you would like.
Yeah, I think, I think that's all good. I, I, my sense is right now that we may need some more time. Instead of going to Thursday, we may need, you know, and there's no, there's no time. There's no timeout on when we have to vote on this, correct? So maybe we should just afford more time for this thing before we take a look at the zoning aspect of it. And, and, and if this other option comes to fruition, chances are the zoning may be retracted or not. But what do you think? Do we need more time before we vote on this?
If you do, then rather than closing the public hearing, which you would normally do at the end of this discussion, and then wait 24 hours since this was done by Zoom and, but to the extent further discussion and comments from the public or is, is or may be taken by the board, heard by the board. You, you would, you wouldn't want to have to re-advertise it and everything. And so if you could recess the, if you go that route, if you recess the public hearing to a day and time certain, we'll pick back up on that day. When the hearing is closed, you would wait the 24 hours. If it's done by Zoom again, you would have to wait the 24 hours before making a, a final decision.
So if, if I may, Madam Mayor, one, one of your options could be to recess this public hearing, let's, let's say for 14 days to a date and time specific. In that 14-day period, the Laels could work with Mitchell relative to their, their boathouse and lake structures, and they could work with Dean relative to the use of those structures. And so they could continue to flesh that out. And if they find that they, their needs are met with the answers they get from those two staff persons, then they then could, could be given the option to withdraw their application. But 14 days seems like to me would be plenty of time. And I'll defer both Mitchell and Dean to work through both of these issues. And it sounds like to me that's the wise thing to do.
Shannon, that's exactly the reason we're bringing up the point of that, is to make sure that everybody has a chance to look at the Laels for their benefit and for, for the town and for the regulations. So I think that's a great, great suggestion, the 14 days.
So before we recess until 14 days, let me just ask if there's, and it is a public hearing. Is there any other member of the public who is with us now who would like to make a comment? Thank you. Just, we wanted to be sure about that. So go ahead. Sorry.
Madam Mayor, I think that the Bakers are talking, but they're muted.
Uh-oh. Okay. I'm sorry. I don't see them.
Okay, okay. We're unmuted.
Oh, thank you so much. Mr. Ms. Baker, please begin.
We purchased the property next door to the property the Laels have now in 2013. I did not realize that our property was CG nor any of the adjacent property was CG. We knew that there was a business next door, Lake Lure Ventures, and we were fine with that. But as all the years that we've owned property across the street, we own a couple cottages across the street, that property that the Lael's, Lael's purchase has always been residential. That cove, with the exception of the dam, Marina, and the Lake Lure Adventures property has always been residential. It is a small cove, very shallow and narrow. And we are very opposed to the rezoning of it, of the Lael property to R1. To the extent this has brought light on the fact that our property from, excuse me, from R1 to CG, it's brought light on our property being CG. And the day after the planning and boarding, board, the zoning and planning board meeting, I applied to Mitchell to have our property rezoned from CG to R1. We've paid the, the, the fee and completed all the paperwork the day after, or the Monday after the zoning and planning board meeting. We agree with the 2007 comprehensive plan that that property, our property and the adjacent property, Lael property, that is split zoned, should be R1. We think it's in the best interest of the cove. We think that it's in the best interest of the community. Parking is an issue. We have parking issues in our property and have to keep it roped off. We don't look forward to having another business operating on the other side of us. The only property for parking is parallel to the highway within the DOT right-of-way. Or we're in the same situation. I'm not sure if the Laels can fit 10 cars in there. That would be a stretch, in my opinion. We can barely fit two cars in our property. And yes, our property has a lot less lake frontage and road frontage. But we think that the zoning for our property should be R1, and we think that all of the Laels properties should be R1. And we really think that there was a mistake at some point where a part of the Lael property got split zoned CG. The problem we have with changing it to the R1 that this meeting is about to Commercial General is the Laels might decide that, that they're done with their business and they sell the property a year from now. And it can be anything that Mitchell read in the zoning and planning board, once it gets rezoned CG. And that's very concerning to, to us being the immediate neighbor. We have had several conversations with other neighbors in that cove. And they certainly are opposed to having another business so close to their residential property and in such a small, shallow, narrow cove. Thank you for your time.
Mayor, you're muted.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ms. Baker. I'm sorry. I didn't realize I was muted. Are there any questions anyone has for the Bakers or comments?
Just, just one final question, Madam Mayor. So thank you, Bakers, for, for, you know, giving us your concerns. And I, I guess my question is, you don't want it rezoned because of what might happen to the property, right? But you, you, I mean, they've been operating the livery there now. Has it been a problem for you if there's another way to moor those boats without changing anything from where we are today?
Um, we have not noticed it being a problem, but we've had a, had a difficult year this year. My 91-year-old mother moved in with us and we've spent very, very little time at Lake Lure this past spring, summer, and fall. So I'm not sure we would know if it's been a problem or not in that, in that area. Yes, we're concerned about having more activity next door to us and of a commercial na- nature, whether it be just boats coming and going or long-term mooring of those boats.
Okay.
Any other questions for the Bakers that anyone has? Thank you so much for speaking. Is there anyone else from the public who has a comment or has anything to say that's germane to this issue? Then I think that we are in agreement that we need more time to look into this, certainly more time than is afforded by addressing this Thursday at 1:00. And so the suggestion was made by Mr. Morgan that we recessed his public hearing for 14 days, which gives everyone an opportunity to explore more fully and have a fuller understanding of the laws and regulations. Do I hear a motion that we do that?
Also include the exact time that you're going to reconvene, the date and the time.
Okay. In that case, we need to look at a date, which is amenable to everyone. Let me look count.
Mayor, if I may, Commissioner Kilby, two weeks from today is the 23rd. That's a Tuesday. I'm not sure if there's conflicting meetings or anything of other boards, but we could certainly convene and do that then and pick a time.
I believe that morning is free because I believe we do not have our Lobella update that morning as of this morning.
Correct.
So it might be possible for us. I know it seems to be more convenient for some people if we do it in the morning. So we might possibly be able to schedule this meeting if it's amenable to everyone at, I'm just picking a time at perhaps either nine or, or 10 o'clock on Tuesday, the 23rd of March.
Do you need a motion for that?
I do. If, if that's, if that's the date, we want to make the motion.
I'll make a motion that we, that we schedule that meeting for March 23rd at 9:00 a.m.
And by schedule, you mean you were
We want to recess until
Till that day. That's correct, William. I'm sorry.
Zoom as this one was.
At 9:00 a.m.
At 9:00 a.m. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
All right. If you'll vote, please, with your name.
Commissioner Bryant, yes.
Diorio, yes.
Kilby, yes.
Moore, yes.
Thank you very much. Then this public hearing, GS 1668-19.24 is recessed until March the 23rd, Tuesday, March the 23rd at 9:00 a.m. Thank you very much. And thank everyone who, who attended and, and shared their information with us. We appreciate that. We will now move on to our council liaison reports. We'll start with Commissioner Diorio.
Good news, Madam Mayor. I'll be very quick. So the UAB continuing to work on policy. And I'm not going to preempt the work that they've done because they will present at our next working group meeting, which I think right now is scheduled for the 31st in the morning. And I'll just let them, Rick Glass and the chairman will present at that time. And we'll have all the questions and answers completed at that point. And the town manager has discussed all the other aspects of the, of the UAB. So that concludes my brief report.
Oh, that's wonderful. We, we appreciate both the brevity and the information. Thank you. We will move on then to Commissioner Kilby.
Lake Advisory met March the 1st for their regular monthly meeting. The main item that was discussed in that meeting was the request from Jay Freeman about the barge, which we've dealt with the day in council meeting. Everything else was normal for the Lake Advisory Board meeting. ABC Board has not met, but is scheduled to meet next week. That will be a Zoom meeting and there's also a closed session that will be a part of that dealing with ABC matters. So that's all I have to, to report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Kilby. Commissioner Moore?
Yeah, the zoning and planning board met on the, the third Tuesday of February, whatever date that was, at 9:30. And the order of business was what we just discussed. And so I don't need to rehash that. But also officers were elected. Tom McKay was elected back as chairman and Jonathan Hinkle as vice chair. And the schedule for meetings for this calendar year was approved.
Okay. Thank you so much. Commissioner Bryant, do you have a report for Parks and Recs or?
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, Madam Mayor, and thank you, everyone. LSAB BOA did not meet in February. That meeting was canceled due to lack of agenda items that needed to be addressed. So we, we can follow up for those at our next meeting, if anything comes to the attention of that particular board. Parks and Rec had a very good meeting on March the 5th and just some quick updates from them. So Buffalo Creek Park, Weed Patch Mountain Trail. Mrs. Bradley has done an incredible job and continues to do so. As I'm telling, as a member of our employment staff and a really great spearhead, a member of personnel for all of our parks and trail systems. We're looking at some things for Buffalo Creek Park, Weed Patch Mountain, and the Trail to Eagle Rock. Buffalo Creek, we're still looking at a mark, a matching grant for some parking spaces up there. And we're still looking at some trail days. In April, there's going to be a cleanup on Boys Camp Road that Mo Bay, who is a member of that board, is organizing. And we're going to be looking at some roadside cleanup days for town-owned roads, not DOT roads, but the town-owned roads during that time. So the Flaring Bridge has had some very wonderful fundraising efforts and with Mo Bay spearheading and their incredible committee, they've sold 55 bricks as part of their brick program that have raised over $8,800 as of right now. So that's a gross number of $8,800 raised for the brick program, which continues to flourish. And their fundraising efforts are moving along incredibly well. So the Flaring Bridge has done a great job with their upcoming classes and several other elements that they are going to be able to come together. So Morse Park and the golf course, future, we have several things. There is an item on the agenda for the future RFP, which we'll get into a little bit later. Looking to see about potential future engagement for a, a new concessionaire for that space or for Mr. Minnick and his folks to continue there. So there, after 10 years at the park, that space does have to be reassessed and we are working on that with all of our town folks to look at those. There's a lot of stuff that happens on the internet with social media and such. But the town is looking at RFPs to continue a concession agreement there at this time. Outside of that, we did not have a lot of other input. We're very excited about all the things that Flaring Bridge is doing and looking forward to a great year in Parks and Rec. The trail system and the trail counters at the bridge and all of our trail systems have been markedly much higher than they have in previous years. So you can tell people are here in our area spending their money, investing their, their money here into our tax revenues to enjoy our outdoor recreation. So it's a great division for us to be attending some level of focus too right now. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Very, very informative. That concludes our section six. We'll move to section seven. Public comment. If there is anyone in the public who would like to make a comment, if you will, please, let me touch five minutes, state your name and address. If you will unmute your mute and let us know you would like to speak, we would be delighted to hear from you. Then we will assume that there's no one who wishes to speak at this time, but you are certainly always welcome to do so. We'll move on then to our consent agenda. Do I hear a motion to adopt the consent agenda as written?
I'll make a motion. We adopt the consent agenda with the exception of, one of the agendas had the Budget Amendment Number 300 and that it has been taken out and moved to new business. But beyond that, I'll make a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
Diorio, second.
All in favor?
Commissioner Bryant, aye.
Diorio, aye.
Kilby, aye.
Moore, aye.
Then the consent agenda is adopted, is amended. I will move on to unfinished business and that I will move on to unfinished business, and that I believe that's our Public Works CIP review. And I will defer to either Shannon or David Arrowood for that continuation of that discussion.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So David is just going to briefly hit the highlights or the high spots of some of the requests relative to CIP items for Public Works.
Yes, Shannon, I'm, I'm on my phone, so I can see real well, but I've, I've got copies of my CIP here in front of me. Number one, being the Firefly Cove Water Interconnect, I've asked for a budget of $350,000 for next year if we move forward with that interconnect. I think everybody's got a pretty good idea of what that is, but I'm willing to, you know, talk about it, answer any questions or whatever, if anybody has any.
I would, I probably would add, that's one item that we are going to need to explore, and we're going to do that in short order. So that request could drastically change.
Correct.
All right, thank you, David.
Do you think it's worth telling the council what, what we're exploring? Does anyone have any questions on that for the alternate? Because we're, we're being a little mysterious here.
Would you like to share that with us? I'm not sure exactly who's in charge of deciding what we're doing. So I'll defer to you, Commissioner Diorio, or David Arrowood, whoever would like to make the statement.
David, I'll follow your lead unless you want me to chime in.
Go right ahead, Dave.
So the, the resolution from the engineers were to put in a pump station that draws on the Chimney Rock section of the, of our water system and to replace the well. It's really a solution that replaces the well that is a little suspect in the Firefly Cove interconnect. What we did not explore was simply opening the interconnect to the Chimney Rock system, which is at pressure, and seeing how far it would go instead of putting in a new pump. So we don't know the answer to that question. So everything's kind of on hold until we determine what happens when that interconnect is open, and also what happens when the interconnect to the south side water system, which includes the Ingalls Tower, another tower, I think, up in the Highlands, and a high-pressure 200-pound system over there. So until we know how our cross connects work, if they do work, if they'll protect the system, it really makes no sense to put in a pump that's a workaround system that doesn't really solve the problem. So David Arrowood is the man. He's got the lead on that, and we'll report to council. He will report, and the town manager will report when we know those answers.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Commissioner Diorio or David Arrowood? Then we'll reserve discussion on that when we have more information. Did you want to continue?
Yes, ma'am. My next item is in the water department as well. It's the electronic water meters, which we have been talking to a couple of different companies about. I've got pricing from these companies that gives us an idea of, of, you know, what it would take and what it would cost. We basically asked for $200,000 in this year's budget to move forward with changing over to electronic meters to try to cut back on taking almost a week every month reading meters. The last company that I talked to was Sensa through Ferguson. They have these meters all over North Carolina. They gave me like 160-something references of towns that they are in now, and, you know, said, "We're more than welcome to call anybody." I do know they're on both sides of us. Hendersonville uses the same meters, and have had great results. I went over to Columbus and talked with Tim Barth, the town manager over there, just last year. They purchased meters through them. They're doing the same thing. And he said, you know, "They are tickled to death with the service that they've got." These, these meters through Sensa have a 15-year unconditional warranty, and the last five years, they have a prorated warranty. But they said, you know, "A lot of them have meters that's been in the ground 22, 25 years and not had a minute's trouble." So that's just something that I've put out there, you know, wanting to know what y'all's thoughts are on it, and, and if you have any questions.
David, if I, if I may, the business case on these meters is that we're talking for approximately $200,000 for these electronic read meters. And that zaps one week of time for the Public Works Department every single month. It also zaps a lot of time for front office staff. Estimates are that we're looking at about $35,000 to $35,000, $35,000 to $40,000 worth of time that's been eaten by the way we're reading meters. So you can see what the payback is. Within six to seven years, you're breaking even, and then you've got the gain. So upfront costs are large, but six to seven years is your break-even point, and then you gain that, that back. But in the meantime, you're gaining your labor in the field and in the office that we need. Recently, David's crew installed a water line. Estimates, we, without those guys performing that task, that would have been about a $50,000 outsource. So we've got skilled staff now. With David's leadership, we can perform more of that work, but they need time. And so this buys us time, and we have a break-even point in about six or seven years.
Any questions from anyone on that subject? And David, what else?
Let me see here. The next thing on my list is, I've asked for $20,000 in the sewer department, which would be money that would be used to install two manholes in Morse Park. There's only one access manhole out there at the entrance to the marina that everything out there is tied into. During this lake drawdown, we had Tim Edwards out there digging and, and with his long arm trying to locate where the existing sewer system comes down the river and into the lake, and we had no luck finding the existing line. We think we know where it's at, but we're not positive. We've never laid eyes on it. We do know where that line comes across Morse Park, out behind the Welcome Center, by the playground and all. And what this is proposing is to put one manhole in there about the basketball court and install another out there at the river's edge. By doing this, that's a section of the line that could be used in the future with this new system that's going in. Plus, it could give us access to be able to put a camera or something like that in the line to be able to locate exactly where the main line comes down through the river from up toward Chimley Rock Village. If we were able to access that line and put that camera in there and find out exactly where it is, then we just have a, a higher level of protection to know that we'll never hit that line in that riverbed. So that's kind of what that's about, if anybody has any questions.
Any questions on the proposal to install two new manholes? What else, David?
Okay, let's see here. My next one is the fifth replacement at Public Works. You know, we, we had everything located and all out there at the Public Works facility, marked everything. We know where our property lines and stuff, stuff are now. And originally, I had asked for $60,000 in the CIP for that fencing out there. Since then, I have talked to y'all about just doing part of that fencing, which is the worst sections of it, and it hides all of the debris and equipment and everything from the public's view. I think if, if the board is willing to move forward with the budget amendment that we've proposed tonight, I don't see any reason we couldn't pull this $60,000 out. And, you know, do, do this portion now, and, and maybe in further years, future years, do more of it if we have not figured out somewhere to move the Public Works facility. But this basically $18,000 or $20,000 compared to the 60 that I'm asking for in this CIP.
Yeah, good news.
Yeah, we'd like saving money for sure. Anything else, David, or any more questions for David Arrowood?
I have just, just a couple more.
Oh, okay, continue.
That I will go through pretty quick. One is being the street paving. As most of you are aware, you know, we had the street study done back a few years ago, and it recommended that we spend a lot more on the street paving than just pal bill money. In the last couple of years, the board has done a great job with funding more money to, to bring these streets up to a, a good pavement rating. And I would love to continue that. You know, the plan basically said if we could put $180,000 a year toward that for eight or 10 years, you're going to get your streets in pretty good shape. And so that's what we've been doing the last few years, and, and I'm asking to continue to do the same thing. But, you know, that's totally up to the board, and if you've got any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Any questions on that? All right, David.
All right. I've got a watertight lid. It's, it's not a real big expense, but it is $6,000. It's over the 5,000 threshold. This is something DEQ has recommended that we do to one of our water tanks on top. They didn't like the design of the old one, and, and they wanted just, they put it in an inspection report that they would like to see us replace that with a watertight hatch. And the cost for that is, is basically $6,000. And that's something we can have made and install ourselves.
Okay. Any questions about that? Any more items on your list?
The last one I have is the replacement of, of one vehicle in the Public Works Department. That's the 2005 truck, was over 100,000 miles. It's, it's been giving us some problems in the past and using some oil. This is the last of the vehicles that was, has been here for some time. Other than this vehicle, we have done a great job with, with getting replacements of vehicles and, and dump trucks and equipment. You know, if we could replace this one truck, I think that would put the town in pretty good shape for several years as far as equipment and vehicles in the Public Works Department.
And you project that would be a cost of what?
It was $45,000.
Okay. So is that the end of your CIP?
Yes, ma'am, it is.
We thank you for sharing that with us. You always have lots of, of good explanations about why things are needed, and that's what this is supposed to be for. Before we move on, is, are, are there any questions for Mr. Arrowood by anyone on any of these items? And thank.
No, no questions. Arrowood's pushing his limit on time allotted. That's the only thing I want to say.
I hear you.
I just, I'm just curious if, if there's anything, you know, in the, in this CIP that, that gives anybody heartburn. So we'll kind of know how to prepare to move forward, you know? If, if, if there's anything in there that, that can really you're not interested in or, or you are interested in, I, I would love to know, and, and just kind of give me an idea of how to proceed, you know?
David, from my perspective, you just keep up the good work. We appreciate what you're doing, the people you're bringing in, and the positive things that we see happening in Public Works.
These are certainly concrete things that you're suggesting. So unless anyone else has any red flags for David, which we don't seem to, we'll move along. And, and thank you, David, for everything you do, not only for keeping us up to date on what your needs are, but for keeping our, holding our town together.
Thank, thank you. I greatly appreciate that, and y'all keep up the good work. Keep moving forward.
All righty. We'll keep looking for money. Great. We'll move on to new business then, and the first item on our new business is a golf course property appraisal, RFP review and discussion. I think Dean, are you still with us? You are, or you're not?
I am.
Okay, great. Then we'll just let you begin.
All right. We got the RFP prepared to go out, but one of the things that we were going to bring back to you guys was a, an attachment A, which is a map of town-owned property in the area. Michelle, if you could scroll up to the map. There you go. If you look at the green area, kind of to the top left, that would be the clubhouse side of the golf course, along with the Lake Lower Fire Department. The side to the right, I think it says Track A there. If I get some glasses on, I might can see it. Yeah, there you go. Okay, Track A is one of the tracks that we're proposing to have an appraisal done on. And also, if you'll scroll down just a little bit further, please, Michelle. Okay, then Track B would be the commercial area that we have across from Ingalls next to the Dipper Watts Trail. Track C would be a commercial area that is at the corner of Island Creek Road and Highway Number Nine. And then Section D would be set to the right of the driveway going into the Lake Lower Classical Academy. So the RFP that we have to send out, we'd like this map to go with it and have them give us the appraisal for Track A, B, C, and D on this, that's laid out on this map. And with your guys' approval, this will be what we send out with the RFP. That'll make the RFP ready to go.
Dean, are you, if, if we give this to someone for appraisal, are they going to be limited to what we have marked here as residential and what we have marked as commercial or public works or whatever? We, I think it would, we would, it would be good to get their recommendations on what topography or what part of the property lends itself more to commercial and what lends itself more to residential.
So Dean, if I may?
Yes, please.
So this is a draft map, and so in this discussion, we want to hear council's thoughts about just that, Commissioner Moore. If you have those kinds of thoughts, we'll add those as notes, and so that the appraiser will have that kind of information and can help steer us. So that's exactly what we hope to flesh out in this discussion today, this evening.
Okay, as we look on the Island Creek Road there, I guess that would be the east side of Island Creek Road, where you've got the open spaces and posed Public Works area. Is, did I understand that was going to be part of what we were getting appraised or no?
No, sir.
Good, because that, that wasn't really what, I think, I thought we were pretty much set on that being kind of what it is. I think the, the, the rest of it, I think as long as the people doing the RFPs know that they're, that these were just suggestions on either our part or, or one of our committee's parts, that we aren't married to any of these different categories here that we'll look, we'd be looking to them to give us the highest and best use on each parcel, then I think it's okay for me. See what everybody else thinks.
I was just going to say, you're correct, John, with the, what we're doing at Public Works area, the open space area, that's not included. Just the ones that are labeled with A, B, C, and D are the ones that we are going to include in that. If they want to give us a, a best use or alternative use or whatever, that, I think that would be great.
Good, good. Just a lot, long as they know that.
And Commissioner Moore, this is Commissioner Bryant. So we, I met with
And Commissioner Moore, this is Commissioner Bryant. So we, I met with Ms. Bradley and Mr. Givens and Commissioner, Town, Town Manager Baldwin and Mr. Mitchell last week. And we kind of went through some of these elements and looked at several different property maps that are your zoning districts, some satellite imagery, the old master plan and several other things to kind of flesh out this sort of initial sort of blush attempt at looking at what our highest and best use could be for these properties based on how much acreage you have on the north and the south side of Memorial Highway. Plus what is already designated as government use, like the fire department is on the south side of Memorial. And you already have the, the, the golf course main house right there too, that has this government aspect already kind of built in. So it's not a set in stone, but it's a really good first blush kind of stroke of the pen to kind of see where we can go from here, based on what could happen.
Yeah, we'll, we'll let the folks know this seems to be our preference, but if we, if we miss something from, you know, with them being the experts in development, then, you know, certainly give us, give us your suggestions.
Yep, absolutely. And one of the, one of the items I brought up is the tributary that runs on the north side of Memorial Highway, down that piece that is zoned residential right there. And to see how that, you know, could, could help or hinder based on highest and best use. So I think those, those professional assessments can really give us some good insight outside of just what our first reactions might be from it. So.
Okay, good. Sounds like a good plan to me.
We'll make sure that we incorporate a narrative, some additional wording that will make sure they understand they have flexibility when assessing A, B, and C and D.
Okay. Now, my, my map, Michelle, can you move the map down just a hair? Uh, the other way. Yeah, the, all right, the, the section now where the whole line for the golf course is, is that, what section is that? Is that, is, is that being part of what we're asking for analysis on?
You're saying on the left side of Memorial Highway there, where the Lake Lower Fire Department is? Yeah, that's not in, that was not included.
Okay.
Would, would be a piece that we thought we would hang on to, preserve that. It wouldn't preclude us, you know, considering transfer of that at some point in the future. But right now, with the recreational uses that we have planned in various accessory plans and also perhaps a need for storage for equipment for recreation, it seems that right now that would be better a use that we basically would keep out of, of, of consideration. That we have facilities there that next to the fire department. And we think possibly now would be a better time for us to think about hanging on to that and not, and not, not consider releasing that, that property from the town's ownership.
I think you're probably right about that, but when they come in and do this appraisal, is most of what they're, you know, everything that they're, the general information they're getting for the, for the parcels A, B, C, and so forth, will be the, would, would be also be pertinent to that. And I guess my point is that it wouldn't call, it's not going to cost very much more to include that as a separate parcel while they're there and doing it. It's, and it might be, I, I think it would be a good idea if we're going to have them do all of the, every, of holes one through eight to also do hole nine as well, just so, just so we have that. And then have it, they can just keep it separate.
Okay, so we could add A, B, C, D, we could do an E.
Yeah.
And an F. If you want us to.
What would be, what would be F?
If you're saying you want us to have the recreational on the, basically would be the north west side of Memorial Highway, we can have them take a look at that too, if that's your preference.
I, I would. I don't know. What, what, what rest you folks think?
Well, I don't see how it can hurt to have them take a look at it. We certainly don't have to use it. We're not under any, you know, constraint to use it for anything else, but it would be nice to know. I think as long as they're doing it, they might as well do the whole thing.
Sure.
Sure, we can break those out. We can add those letters, have that assessment. Is, is the board okay with us keeping out the public works site that Dean is working to have as a fill site to keep that out of the appraisal?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, definitely. You know, because it'll have governmental use anyway, it's probably best to keep it out at this time.
Yeah.
Is the board okay with us keeping out all the, the Dittmer Watts Trails? Keep that out of the assessment as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, definitely. Thank you.
Then we're very, very close.
See, when, when they do their analysis on section A here, just about everything they do there is going to apply to this section directly across the street. So it's not, you know, they, they may have another, just another hour or two in it to offer an appraisal of, of that part as well.
Yeah.
It's always nice to know what you've given up, if you're going to give something up. So
Yeah, exactly.
Certainly the wisdom in that. I think we, I think we got it. I think we've got enough where we can make the adjustments and finish up revisions to attachment A. Dean, I think you've got it.
Thank you, Dean, for all this.
Okay, thank you.
If there are no other questions or comments, then we'll move on to item B, the Pangaea Agreement Review. And I'm probably going to either turn that over to Shannon or Mr. Morgan, whichever, whomever wants to address it.
I'll give a, just a, just a real quick overview. Right now, we're at that time where we needed to, to notify Pangaea if we plan to make any sort of change. And so if you recall, the board directed Town Manager, Town Attorney, write a letter, send that to Pangaea in keeping with the agreement and the associated amendments with that original agreement. And so we did that. And so Pangaea was basically put on notice in keeping with the agreement. And so we had that discussion with them last, last month. And so we asked them to respond after we made clear that we had, you know, we had some, we, we would like to see some changes in that agreement relative to exclusivities. Also relative to, we're looking for redundancy to make sure that if the Pangaea fiber goes out on the south side of town, we had a way that we could continue service. Some of the storms we had, as you guys know, we had internet service went down and our, certainly our public safety folks rely on that as well as other departments to keep the town moving. And so we did receive back a letter that's been shared with you from Mr. Walters, the director at Pangaea. And so he, he basically let us know that there are two options proposed and those are before you right there. That they basically said that we have two options that no changes would be made and allow for the term to renew for an additional year as provided for in the agreement. And so there would be no charge for an additional year under the current agreement or they, they basically said they could accommodate the requests that we have in there, but there would be charges with that. And there was a fee schedule included in that letter that was sent, sent to you. So that's a, that's kind of a summary. I think Mitchell has been exploring for us other possible options and he created a memo. And what we have, and what we know, there are other service providers in the area that offer a different mix of, of services. So Mitchell, is there anything you want to touch on just briefly about your summary that you created? Who did you send it to and what did we ask them to respond to?
Hello again, everyone. So I sent questions to ERC Broadband, Vibe Broadband, which was formerly, formerly Northland Cable, Skyrunner and AT&amp;T. I asked three questions. Can you provide services to the following locations? Town Hall, Lake Operations, and the dam, the Fire Department, and Public Works. I asked for locations without fiber, if they could offer a point-to-point internet service. And I asked, also asked if their service had connection redundancy. And just a quick summary, ERC came back stating that they do have a fiber line, as we know, directly in front of Town Hall. And in that memo, there was the response from their individual that included the monthly costs of those services. They also are going to touch base with information regarding their ability to connect our other town facilities. Vibe Broadband, it's, I'm still waiting on a response from Ken Johnson to see their capabilities of providing services to all locations. And AT&amp;T, I spent a significant amount of time kind of bouncing around in their call centers and left a voice note for Mr. McClanahan, who should be touching base. He is their area manager for network services. And I also reached out to Skyrunner. And as mentioned in my memo, there is an agreement between Pangaea and Skyrunner that may complicate Skyrunner's abilities to provide services to the town on top of our current agreement with Pangaea. And I don't have a whole lot of information, but the, the information provided in the memo and the statement from Skyrunner, specifically Andrew Hayes, shed some more light on that.
The, one of the, one of the things that, that we know and understand now, as you recall, we originally started this process to see if we could find a company that could provide Wi-Fi in our town center to give us internet access to Morse Park, the beach, you know, better than what we were receiving. And as a result, that RFP, we, we had some discussions. We were able to talk with Pangaea and express, you know, some of our concerns about the redundancy. And we did have some, some talks with Skyrunner, independent of Pangaea. And so Skyrunner basically had a proposal where they felt like they could run fiber. They could basically put a cabinet outside the town building and then run a line from that cabinet, which would contain their equipment into Town Hall and provide us that redundancy. Well, since that time, Pangaea and Skyrunner basically have struck a deal. And part of that agreement is that, that in order for Skyrunner now to work with us, they have to basically secure permission from Pangaea. So that kind of furthers Pangaea's ability to kind of keep out competition, so to speak. And, and Mr. Walters explained why that is, that they've put money into their fiber and they're hoping to, to make sure that, you know, they can maintain a monopoly so that they get, recover their cost. And so he, he went through that. I'm not going to rehash his reasons, but he went through that with us last, last month. So that is something that has come about as a result of our probing, trying to get redundancy and improve latency and some other things as a result of our first RFP. So this is where we are at this moment in time. I don't feel like we have enough information from the other service providers. We're starting down that road. We certainly can go for another year at no charge. We maintain service. But then we diligently begin to work to see what other services are available to us. And we probably would find ourselves back at this point next year, perhaps with much more information than we, than we have right now. Our hopes was that Pangaea would see the seriousness of our issues and possibly come back with a proposal that would not attempt to lock us in with the exclusive equipment license and walling out competition in all town facilities where they presently are or may want to go. It seemed to be very one-sided. It is what it is. We signed it. And, but we, there's nothing keeps us from taking the next 12 months and seeing if we can find better ways to receive better service to get the things that, that, that we want. So, Mr. Morgan, is there anything you'd like to add from your perspective that you feel like we need to know?
I'll just add that I haven't seen that agreement between Pangaea and Skyrunner. I did see one that included the town, which included the town. So I, I'm not quite sure how they, how Pangaea is, is tying the hands of, of Skyrunner. But they say they are. They would have for sure under the agreement that was a three-way agreement or, or an agreement that the town had a signature block on it and they wanted us to sign off because they were going to be coming into Town Hall. I don't know if the Town Hall facility, the Pangaea facility in Town Hall is facilitating what Skyrunner is doing now that they needed Pangaea for. I guess, you know, I got some unanswered questions about all that, but otherwise I think you've summed it up quite well.
I think, I think what our original RFP that we released, Pangaea, you know, they probably realized it, but I think it become even clearer that they wanted to have redundancy as well. So they, independent of the town, went to Skyrunner and secured an agreement with them so that they basically are, or have redundancy for their customers through Skyrunner. So it was independent of the town. So they do have that agreement with, with Skyrunner right now, but part of that agreement is there's a no compete clause and some other things that are now part of that agreement with Skyrunner. So in other words, Skyrunner can't work with the town as long as they're in this agreement with, with Pangaea. So that complicates things even a little, a little more.
William, I've got one question for you. If we were to agree to keep the, to extend this agreement for another year, does does that lessen in any way our ability to take arms length straight up bids from different companies, different proposals from different companies at the end of the year? So that we can make this an arms-length transaction and get away from some of this, these restrictions that were put on here in the past?
No, I don't think anything that flows from that agreement, your current agreement with Pangaea limits the town from, from doing that. I mean, from exploring other options with other providers.
Okay, well, as I, I want to make sure.
No, I'm sure. I mean, that, I, I can't think of anything.
If we, if we continue on with them for another year, then we've got a year to get solid proposals from whoever else is providing or is capable of providing what we're looking for that wants to give us a bid.
Correct. There's, I don't see anything wrong with that. I can't imagine there being anything, but but you'd want to get, get alternatives lined up or, you know, well in advance of the anniversary date next year.
You know, I think at, at the time that we renew or, or continue for another year, we want to make sure that, that Pangaea is on notice. That that's our intention, that we, we would, we would welcome a proposal from them going forward from August, April fifteenth next year. But be, you know, be advised that we're getting proposals from the other companies that can provide the same service.
Correct. You know, there's a, I probably shouldn't say it because I don't know the details of it at all. I'm not really, haven't been on top of that, but there's also some. I, I know that there's some legislation being considered or read anyway in the league publication that there's a, that would, that may play into this because it was, it had to do with broadband and competition and anti-competition. Things like that. Maybe some of you are more. Things like that. Maybe some of you are more well-versed in that than I, but in any event, there could be some changes that may impact this discussion as we go through the, the next few months.
So what are we looking for here? I guess is my question.
I guess we made a determination between option one and option two. Those are the only options. For one is that we make no changes and just continue to let the term renew for an additional year. Option two is that we remove the exclusive equipment license and third-party conditions and we pay them a rate for the services which they gave us a copy of their, of what the charges would be.
I think we want to be careful here not to shoot herself in the foot and, and not.
Yes.
Public safety and everything that we have to be aware of. So, you know, and my opinion is that the continuation to give us time to get started now for other options is, is the best option. That's my.
I'd have to agree with Commissioner Kilby, and I'd also like to proper that we, you know, talk to our other county seats and government too, because Pangaea has offered this, you know, this free service for a long time. And our situation in Lake Lure is different, specifically at Town Hall compared to, say, downtown Rutherford, Forest City, Spandale. You know, they have good cellular connectivity. That's our, our lacking piece of this infrastructure here. And to know what, what they're doing is a big piece. Pangaea has offered a great free service for government entities for a long time as part of their nonprofit corporate structure piece. So to, you know, cut off your nose despite your face, as Commissioner Kilby mentioned, is can be a little, a little two-fourths right on our, on our trajectory right now. And it takes some time to weigh all our options and see what, what best options exist for redundancy and for best connectivity, I think are our best foot forward, in my opinion.
I agree. I just don't think we're in a position to make, actually to make that other decision right now. Do I hear a motion in that case?
Shannon, did you have something else you wanted to add?
No, I think you guys, you guys are, you know, as your manager, I just want you to have all the information and make an informed decision.
I understand that we have given the Pangaea notice of the intent to cancel the agreement, so we'll need to make sure that we let them know that we are going to let it roll over.
Mr. Morgan, was that, was that intention to release our agreement before the meeting that we had with Pang, with them most recently? Or was that directly after that meeting? Do you, do you recall?
It was, it was before.
Okay. We, we learned a lot of very valuable information at that last meeting that cleared a lot of air between us and, and Pangaea and Skyrunner and a lot of, a lot of players in this, this, you know, for all of us, no matter how much we think we know, there's always something else to be learned when it comes to technology. I, I think they would, would take an acceptance of, of a rescindance of that with pretty open arms, I would imagine. Just because the end of that conversation was an understanding, we both learned a lot from each other at, as that meeting wrapped up that day. So that would be my, that'd be the hope there at least.
Madam Mayor, I would make a motion that we proceed with option one. We make no change to the agreement and allow the term to renew for additional one-year term as provided in the agreement.
All righty, do I hear a second?
Commissioner Bryant would second that.
All in favor, please vote with your name.
Bryant, aye.
Dario, aye.
Kilby, aye.
Moore, aye.
Then the motion to pursue option one, make no changes to the agreement, allow the term to renew for additional one-year terms as provided in the agreement, passes unanimously. We will move on then to our, the third item on new business, which was added in, which is budget, budget amendment 300, the dam conceptual design.
So I'll start and I think Laura is still with us. I know Laura has some things that she can add for us. She is here. Yes, there's Laura Creji. So we received notice from FEMA that there were some extra funds that they felt like they could send our way. If we had a project that, it's a 65, 35 match. If we had a, a, a project that is going to move us in the direction that we would like to go in. And so we immediately picked up the phone and we had a conversation with Schnabel and we said, look, this council's made a decision to move forward with a new dam. The notional has been sent to DEQ. We know we're moving in that direction. And we want to make sure that if there is, FEMA is saying they have some money that they possibly could send our way, we want to take steps in that direction. And so we basically asked Schnabel for a, what would be our first step in this process? And so they came back and they said, it, it's, it's a great fit. Your first step is to develop concepts and costs that can be used to articulate your need in realistic fashion. Not only to your community, but also to other folks that you may be trying to lobby to secure large amounts of money. So it seemed like a perfect fit for where we want to go. And it demonstrates that we are aggressively moving forward with the schedule that we said we were going to follow. So that's the sum. I know Laura has some more detail, so I will let Laura give you some more. Laura, please fill in whatever I left out.
Thank you, Shannon. That was a great overview. And the only thing I would add, after consulting with you and Schnabel Engineering, we also consulted with Sam Carr and he advised that we would need to have a budget amendment for the full amount of the project. If approved through the FEMA High Hazard Potential Dam Grant Funding Process, they would reimburse us 65% as Shannon indicated after the fact. So that's why we need the budget amendment for the full cost of the, the conceptual design. And that's, that's really all I have to add.
So what's that number?
Yeah, that's just what I was going to ask. What is the full cost?
The full cost is $58,000. I'll get you the full amount here.
No, that's okay.
I think it's, it's in our budget amendment, I believe.
It doesn't say.
Doesn't say.
I'll get it for you. I've got it right here on my desk.
So that's the agenda item request form. Michelle, do you have the actual budget amendment?
The 65% would be $38,770.20 and the town's portion would be $20,498.8.
It's in the budget amendment.
So we've got, we've got the agenda item request form up, the, the document that Sam created and sent over. I, I don't know that we got it in the packet.
Michelle, do you have the budget amendment?
I have the budget amendment, but apparently I didn't add it into this packet. If you want to view it, I can pull it up. Give me just one or two minutes. If you want to view it.
Does anybody, I think that was the amount, was anybody interested in seeing the budget amendment other than to determine what the total amount is?
And as long as you guys, in your approval, you reference budget amendment number 300, all the detail is in there and that's where the $58,000 number is.
Right. Then do I hear a motion that we approve budget amendment number 300?
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve budget amendment, amendment number 300.
Second?
Mr. Bryant, second.
All in favor?
Bryant, aye.
Dario, aye.
Moore, aye.
We got three.
Mr. Kilby, are you there?
Muted.
Is he muted?
Sorry, I, I didn't realize. I, Kilby.
There you go. Then budget amendment number 300 passes unanimously. Thank you so much. And thank you for identifying that, Laura. We always can use as much money as we can find. Yes. The next item is closed session. Moving into closed session, do I hear a motion that we move into closed session?
I'll make a motion that we move into closed session on accordance with GS 143-318.11A3 for attorney-client privilege or legal claims.
Do I hear a second?
Dario, a second.
All in favor?
Bryant, aye.
Dario, aye.
Kilby, aye.
Moore, aye.
Thank you. Then we'll move into closed sessions. I know you need a few moments, Michelle, in order to make sure that we have only the parties who need to be in this closed session. So you'll let us know then, when you're ready for us?
Guys, want to take a break or anything?
We certainly can. If you need a few minutes, would y'all like to take a five-minute break before we do that?
Sounds good.
10 minutes you want? How many you want? Five minutes? But then I'm good with that. Then we'll take a five-minute break. Give you a little time, Michelle, to get us ready.
Mr. Moore. Yeah. Hey, my dog, I just want to let you know, he's been a happy camper eating that dog food for the last two months. He's getting fat, I think. So appreciate all that you did. I know it's sad. I know you miss your puppy, but you're going to get another dog or you're going to hold off, you think?
Well, we, we still have the little one. We still have, we got Maisie. And, you know, I, I always had those big labs when I was hunting.
Yeah.
And, and I'm not doing that anymore. And we're not having to empty a vacuum cleaner bag about twice a day.
No, I, I understand that, yes.
It's only because it doesn't shed. So I'm, I'm, I'm okay right now. I think Kiefer wants one. He wants another big dog.
Well, then Kiefer will have to take responsibility for it. That, that, that's, that's a thing you need to throw in his lap.
Are, are we all here? Patrick, are you with us?
Yes, ma'am, I am. Sorry.
Michelle, are you ready for us?
Here and we're ready.
All right, wonderful. Then as there is no more business to be discussed in open session, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Well, we, we recess.
Oh, that's right. I'm sorry. Do I hear a motion to recess until Tuesday, March the 23rd at 9:00 AM?
I'll make that motion.
I second.
All in favor?
Bryant, aye.
Dario, aye.
Kilby, aye.
Moore, aye.
Then we are recessed until Tuesday, March the 23rd at 9:00 AM.
Hey.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Everybody.
Thank you.
Same work.